Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call our November fifteenth board meeting, council meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is our auditor's financial report.
We began 2022 with a general fund cash balance of $15,823,611. With projected miscellaneous revenue and property tax, our total funds available were When you deduct the encumbrances, the 22 budget, the minimum balance, and then add in what we anticipate is unused budget, our beginning net balance when the year started was $3,990,029. So far this year, we've approved general fund additional appropriations of 207,213. Then November, we had $241,000 of requests. Thirty thousand of that was pulled later. That was the share we found out we didn't need that. So what you have in front of you is a little less, is, I think, $211,000. But when you take out our miscellaneous expenditures, our available balance right now is $3,746,881. And we do generally do not do any general fund additional appropriations in December, so we will finish the year pretty solidly. Move down into the revenue report. I don't think I've got a lot that I had noted here. When you get to this in October, you don't have a lot going on there. In '02, '09, we did receive the Public Defender Commission quarterly reimbursement, which would be the fourth one of the year. It's possible we could get another one before the year ended, to get five this year, which would probably mean three next year. So kind of hope that we don't receive another one there. At least the $354,000, the vast, vast majority of that is Public Defender Commission, but anything that comes from state or local for public safety, there might have been a little bit from the city of Lafayette for reimbursement, but that's... So anyway, we're over what we had anticipated by almost $100,000. I believe that's all I had on the revenue side. Down into the funds, I always mark the general fund. We're at 5.5 million right now, and we'll have December settlements coming up, so that is a solid number at this point in time. $1,205 is tax sale surplus. I just mark this. This is one where when a property is sold at the tax sale, we start at the amount of taxes, and then it is an auction. So if properties are sold more than the minimum bid, it is placed in here in kind of a holding cell for the money until the money is either... The person comes in and pays the tax, and it's redeemed, and then we give the money back to the seller. But so anyway, the $470,000 is just monies that came from, that were paid at tax sale and returned to the tax sale buyers when a redemption occurred. Fund number 2,000, I haven't, you know, mentioned this one for a while, but this is the probation user fees. And just mention this for some of the people who've been on here for a while. We did have, I believe we ended the year a few years ago with $55,000 in the cash balance. And so we have gained on that nicely. We've moved an employee or so out of there and tried to not have the higher-paid employees paid out of that fund, but we have done well to get that one back up to a good, solid balance. The health insurance fund went up almost another $200,000 in the month of October, and I think we are up about $2 million from the year. Now, this year, we did not take any money and put it back into the general fund for health insurance support, which we will do in 2023, but hopefully things will still be solid a year from now. Don't know that I worked anything else. Oh, down here, the American Rescue, 8950. We had 37.6 going into the month, and we did distribute out a half million dollars to food finders, and there was almost $6 million to Wintec for the broadband project. So we have dispersed, you know, a good chunk of that money, but we still have a big chunk left. And I think that that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Bob?
Bob, I got a question on the tax sale surplus.
Yeah.
I picked up on the very end of it. You said when the property sells at tax, it's a sheriff's sale or whatever, and the taxes that are paid, and if it's a surplus, it goes back to the seller. You're not talking about the previous owner. You're talking about the county, aren't you?
No, this is... If a property goes up for tax sale, let's say it goes up for $1,000 is how much taxes are owed on the property, and say it sells for $5,000, then we take the first $1,000 and we post it to the tax payments. And that other $4,000, we put in this fund.
Oh, okay.
And then it sits in this fund, and the county's getting interest on it.
Oh, okay.
But when the property is redeemed, then we are using that money and we're giving that back to the tax sale purchaser, because he did pay that money.
Oh, the tax bill.
We're just giving that money back.
Right, right.
And then the original owner is paying a little bit of interest on that money as well. But so this is kind of a holding... We don't ever get to keep this money unless the surplus is not claimed for a year, and I think we had that last month. We moved money into the general fund. When a property is redeemed and their surplus, and it wasn't... No, I'm going to say that wrong. If a property goes to deed, like they do not redeem it, then the person who bought a tax sale can't give that money back. It can go back to the person who lost the property, but if they don't claim it, then it goes to the county.
I see. Then if they don't claim it, then let's put it in a fund for demolition of dilapidated buildings.
Well, I believe this is my statute is where I've asked to go.
All right, no problem. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? Hearing none, we'll move on to our treasures report. Jennifer?
So interest for the month of October was 300... Gosh, I can't even read that on my tablet. A little bit further. We were starting to pick up tax collections towards the end of October, so our balances are higher for that month. Our average interest rate was 3.33%, but November 1st, the rates went up another 3/4%. So right now in November, we're sitting at 4.1% interest earnings. So I'm fairly confident we'll hit the revised budget goal for the general fund of $1,575 or even over that with the increase. I didn't have anything on any of the other pages to report on particularly, other than to say that the ARPA funds were mentioned, and so far to date, just this year, $355,000 of interest on that money has gone to the general fund, because that fund doesn't keep its own interest. So that has helped the general fund. I don't know how much of that would be seen in 2023, just because we are seeing some of those disbursements start to go out for the projects. So I don't think we could count on that much of it, but just wanted to point out how much that is. And then also, the self-insurance interest is going to the general fund, and so far this year, that's $108,000 of interest. So pretty big chunks of money there, having the interest go to the general fund on those. And then lastly, just wanted to say that we are still receiving mail from the tax collection, but we're sitting at 94% with one tray, one big tray of mail to post yet today, and we'll probably get some throughout the week and should be about 96, 97, which is where we usually are by the end of this week, and then we can turn it over to Bob for the settlement.
Okay.
Unless there are any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next up, we have our public comment on any of our agenda items before us this morning. Is there anyone that would like to have anything to say about our agenda items? If not, we'll move on into our consent agenda, which includes the meeting minutes from our October 11th meeting. Do I have any items that need to be removed, or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I would move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have additional appropriations, starting out with Superior Court 2.
Mr. President, I move that we approve additional appropriation for Superior Court 2 from the general fund for $19,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the general fund appropriation for Superior Court 2 in the total amount of $19,000. Discussion.
This is just the end of the year, trying to catch up on the different trials and whatnot that have been going on in the court.
Okay, so we've got pauper and jury?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we... Oh, we missed the transcriptions.
Do I want to go ahead and do that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that we approve additional appropriations from the general fund of $12,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the $12,000 for Superior Court 2 in the amount of $12,000. Discussion.
Same, same thing.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Superior Court 6, additional appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we approve additional appropriation of $2,000 from the general fund as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the general fund appropriation of $2,000 for translator for Superior Court 6. Discussion.
Again, just to get us through the end of the year, this estimated cost of invoices for the remaining three months.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Prosecutor, additional appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the appropriation of $5,604 from the 4D Incentive Fund, 8895, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hamp... or Dolam. Get them backward. Second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the 4D Incentive Fund, 8895 appropriation in the amount of $5,604. Discussion.
This is, yeah, for the grant.
Just part-time and social security for the grant.
The child support incentive money for the grant, yeah.
Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the public defender salary statement.
Okay. So I move that... Mr. President, I move that we approve the 2023 salary statement for... It's up to $30, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
As presented.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the 2023 salary statement for the public defender for part-time clerical up to $30 per hour. Discussion.
And this is something that is... I don't think it's any change from what it is for '22.
Right.
When we did the '23 budget stuff, they just didn't get a part-time rate put on their salary statement.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Community Corrections Fund 1122.
Make a motion, re-approve Community Corrections Fund 1122 in the amount of $233,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Community Corrections Fund 1122 appropriation in the amount of $233,000. Discussion.
Good morning.
Hi, Jason.
This is just transferring some money from our user fees into those accounts to cover, obviously, utilities and then some other professional services, total court services, which does our electronic monitoring, therapy notes that our new leaf counselors use, and some other miscellaneous services that we need.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have coroner additional appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation for the coroner out of the general fund, $25,000 autopsy and $7,000 body transfer for a total of $32,000.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the general fund additional appropriation for the coroner in the total amount of $32,000. Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
The rationale I was using with this is we were taking the average of autopsies that we do per month, and we pushed it out through the end of the year. It'll give us a buffer of two autopsies, so you may get $3,000 back at the end of the year if we stay on track. And then as far as the transport, we're still... We're at 420 cases to date, and we have over 700 calls. So anytime there's a case, they have to get transported, so we use the average on that as well. So we're averaging about 42 accepted cases a year, or a month. So that's where I'm getting the numbers from.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Health Department Fund 4118 appropriation.
Make a motion, re-approve the Health Department Donation Fund 4118 in the amount of $320.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Health Department Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of $320. Discussion. Good morning, Amy.
Office supplies.
Office supplies. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have a salary statement for Fund 8463.
Make a motion, re-approve the salary statement for Fund 8463 in the amount of $45,918.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the 2022 salary statement for Fund 8463 in the amount of $45,918. Discussion.
We are able to move a part-time to a full-time in our DIS division, so this will help with that.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you. Next, we have an additional appropriation for the Tippecanoe Villa.
Mr. President, I would move and accept that we accept the increase of the utilities from $21,000 we need out of Fund 3510 for the Tippecanoe Villa.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation of $21,000 for utilities for the Tippecanoe Villa. Deanna, did you want to talk about it at all, or any...
This is for increase in utilities.
Okay. Any questions from council?
And that's from the general fund, right?
Yes, correct. Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have a grant fund for TIMA.
I'll make a motion that we approve the LEPC HMEP Grant Fund, 8431 FS 23, appropriation of $20,000 travel and training.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the grant fund appropriation for Grant Fund 8431, fiscal year 23, $10,000.
Good morning.
Good morning.
LAPC received a $20,000 scholarship again for their training for the hazardous materials that transport through Tippecanoe County to keep our hazmat teams up to date on everything and how they can deal with those situations. So I'm excited to say we've got $20,000 to spend. Woo!
Okay. Any discussion from council or questions?
LEPC is the...
A local emergency planning committee.
Thank you.
Would you like to be on it? We're always looking for political people to be on it.
All right. If there are no other items of discussion or volunteers, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next, we have several different appropriations for the Highway Department. Who wants to start?
Mr. President, I will start on this. When we were over here discussing, we had a couple that came out of the same fund, but as I look at this, that's not correct. So we're going to have to clarify that. So I'm going to go with what's on my sheet right here. It's repair roads and streets out of Fund 3630, $300,000. We were going to combine the 300 and the 210, but they're two separate entities.
That is the same fund. You go with the first numbers, 1135...
Right.
...is telling you, so that's...
And the last... Well, the end of mine is 4220.
Right. Those are going to be different, because that's describing the expenditure.
I'd see that.
So that's a... Yeah, it's the difference between fund and line item.
Okay. In that case, then we'll combine appropriation for $300,000 repairs and maintenance on roads and streets, appropriation for $210,000 for infrastructure on bridges out of Fund 1135.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Cune Bridge Fund 1135 appropriation for a total amount of $510,000. Discussion. Stu.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize. There's a couple of these situations where what has happened is early in the cycle, we made an appropriation out of 1135, and then later made another appropriation out of 1135 for another purpose. So we have two different appropriations, same fund, and that's going to happen again here later on. But anyway, the... Back to purpose. The first $300,000 has to do with pipe repairs. It's pipeline or contract that we actually didn't think was going to get done this year. We got on the schedule, and they were able to do it. So we need to appropriate the $300,000 to pay for that. The $210,000 in the 4220 is emergency bridge repairs. That's our Bridge 7 that we had a failure during the 28, State Road 28 detour. It'll be in... It's in for CCG MG replacement first of the spring, but this was the repair to keep it open. Those are those two.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from council concerning those two? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 1169 appropriation.
Okay, in that same vein, in the highway, Fund 1169, repair and maintenance for roads and streets and patching holes and subdivisions.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Local Road and Street Fund 1169 appropriation in the amount of $75,000. Discussion.
It's a simple overrun of the amount of damages we're experiencing in the subdivision we're patching than we originally budgeted for.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Fund 4805, a couple of appropriations.
Mr. President, out of Fund 4805 for roads and streets and the share of the construction on the old 231, I'm offering up $400,000.
Second. Did you want to do the 450 as well?
Out of that same fund, 4805, we've got some culverts and drains for a total sum of 450. So we have a total sum of $850,000.
Second. Okay. Got a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation from Fund 4805 in the total amount of $850,000. Discussion.
This is an appropriation in anticipation of the fact that there are old 231 safety improvements at McCutcheon High School. That's in December. This is based upon the last engineers estimate. This would be our 10% share of that project we'll have to cut the check for.
Okay. Questions or discussion from council?
Oh, I'm sorry. And then the culvert and drain, the 450, is an appropriation to cover our share of a CCMG award that we're given for culvert replacements.
No discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have the Fund 4880 appropriation.
Mr. President, out of the project revolving fund, 4880, we have a request for $1,200,000.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second... or Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Fund 4880 appropriation for the amount of $1,200,000. Discussion.
This is the 450 South 500 East project at 52, the realignment connection signalization. This is... The appraising is done. This is the value. This is the draw out of the TIFF account to pay for that right away.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 9108 appropriation.
Mr. President, out of Fund 9108, request the culverts and drains of $384,653 and bridges of $7,168.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Community Crossings Grant Fund 9108 appropriation in the amount of Discussion.
This is actually appropriating the state CCMG money that was put into our accounts. That's just their money that we're matching with the previous appropriation to pay for the culvert projects.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it will not bother you again this year.
All right. Next, we have salary statement for surveyor.
Mr. President, I would like to put on the table the discussion of the part-time salaries up to $30.
Second.
Surveyor.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the 2023 salary statement up to $30 an hour for part-time salaries for the surveyor. Discussion.
And this is the same thing as for public defender. We didn't have a rate in there for 23, so Zach, this is the money he had before, so he initialized to put the $30 in there. So this is just... It's no different than what we had before, I don't believe, but it's just to have the rate... We had the part-time appropriation with no rate.
Okay.
So we're cool with that?
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have an additional appropriation for the commissioners.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of the general fund for $125,000 for utilities.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation for the commissioners in the amount of $125,000 for utilities. Discussion. I see Paula coming to the mic.
Exactly what it says it is. It's just for the increase in cost of utilities.
Yep. Okay.[1782.01] Any discussion or questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Okay. Next, do we have any committee reports? To be reported about this morning? 2023 council assignments and appointments in our meeting calendar?
We just threw this in there just because obviously we're getting to the end of '22 and Anyway, we just have those marked for you to look at and see if there's any changes you want to make. But anyway, Susie Scott is willing to stay on for another four-year term for the Benton Library.
Okay, so this is the time to be thinking about appointments. I've already had at least one that's discussed some possibilities there, so.
I remembered what I wanted to talk to you about, the Romney Regional Sewer District. Their board is down to three members and John Basham is no longer on the board. So you still need to, the council still needs to appoint someone. And so I can bring that information to you guys, I can email it to all you so that you're aware of who the council would be appointing.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say.
John's no longer on the board? John's no longer on the board?
No, John's no longer on the board.
Did he resign?
He did.
Because I mean, his term has not ended.
Well, there were my three of us that left after 13 years.
They switched it to three members on the board.
Right.
And so to clean things up, I D M wants them to identify which member is appointed by who. So that's why we do need that documentation in yours.
I didn't want the commissioner to know that because I didn't want to get involved, fucker.
Okay. All right. Any, if you've got any things to discuss there, just let us know and we'll get that taken care of. Any unfinished or new business? Oh, calendar.
One, and if you remember from last month, I think this calendar looks a lot more professional, if nothing else. And so this is what, we do need to advertise this in December, before the year starts, we need to advertise. So the ones that I have outlined in black, those would be the council meetings. And down here in the yellow, these are what? If we want to be consistent with the 2023 budget hearings for '24, the September 5th, that would be the night meeting. But that's just, I'm just throwing that out, that was just be consistent with the way we did it this year. But, and we do advertise the budget hearings as a separate ad, but I think the regular council meetings, we need to get those advertised. There are no conflicts with holidays. And if, this is just consistent with what we have been doing. And I assume also 8:30 would remain the same time.
Yeah, any strong desire to make any changes in that regard or the scheduling? Okay, we'll plan on moving forward with that for '23.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now any new or unfinished business? Commissioner FYI.
Not too much for you. Congratulations on all of you getting re-elected and those back here and newly elected. So congratulations on all of you coming back. If you're interested in donating the United Way, today's your day to see Tom. The Jail Administration Edition is on the homestretch, hopefully by the end of the month, we're hoping, on that end of it. Bridge 32 is open, which is out on Hagerty Lane, which is a pretty cool, they did a one-day, one-night pour, the entire bridge. Or 400 yards of cement or something like that it was. So it was very impressive on that, so if you want to drive out on Hagerty Lane, go over 32. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, 500 North, out by Harrison, we're having a ribbon cutting, which will eliminate all those bad curves and pretty much straighten it up tomorrow. Come in December, 1st of December, we will be accepting bids for the ADA projects out at the villa. We have a lot of restrooms that are not ADA compatible, so we're really trying to fix all that up and bring it back up to code and such. So hopefully, once we get the bids, that way we can encumber the ADA money for next year to be able to do the entire project, is what we're hoping. And last but not least, eventually you're going to see her on Grand Old Opry, but tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00 Shirley's going away party is, and she's dedicated a lot of, I'm going to say thankless, thank you hours, but we dealt with a lot of thankless people, so in a roundabout way. So I really want to say thank you for Shirley for the?
15 years you've been here?
16 years she's been here. So congratulations to Shirley, and we really want to say thank you, so tomorrow afternoon. So thank you, Shirley.
All right. Any public comment to come before us this morning? If not, I'll take that final motion.
Moved to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone.